Okay. We are starting our work session. And we have the long awaited discussion on the housing, I mean, the parks bond. So who do we have here from staff to discuss this? Oh, Stephen Bentley. Hello, Stephen.
Hi, Mayor.
How are you?
I'm not going to talk about housing, I can promise you that.
No, I see all the housing people here too. So anyhow, yeah.
Well, thank you. Mayor Baldwin, Members of Council, my name is Stephen Bentley. I'm one of the Assistant Directors of the Raleigh Parks Department. Thank you for giving us some time today on your work session. Our agenda today is four items, to briefly look at a history of parks' bonds, to go over a high level of the status of the 2014 park bond, talking a little bit about framing the next park bond, and some of the work in which you've deferred to the Parks Board, and then some discussion and next steps. So the last 25 years, we have had five parks' bonds. The first three in those 25 years really focused on growth. We built a lot of parks, greenways, community centers, playgrounds. We took a little bit of a shift in 2007 when we began to reinvest into existing parks above and beyond our five-year CIP. And this notes aligns with that last graph is that the first few parks' bonds in the last 25 years looked at growing the park system. In 2007, slight shift in reinvestment into the park system. And actually, in 2007, we finished some 2003 bond projects. And the primary reason for that was the economy had impacted the 2003 bond projects and some were unfinished. And then in 2014, 65% of our park bond funding for the 2014 bond was reinvestment back into the park system. You've seen this graph before. The symbols for housing are self-explanatory in parks. The ones that represent with a circle around it demonstrate that additional funds remain from those bonds. This is a really busy graph, but I have summarized it on the left-hand side. This is a status for the 2014 parks' bond. 60% of our projects are complete, 20% of our projects are in construction, and then about 20% are in planning and design. You'll see some categories like playgrounds, and building systems, and lighting, and aquatics, and ADA. Those categories have multiple locations, so we're making improvements throughout the park system. We're often asked what takes park projects to take a little while. So we're in 2020, and we're talking about the 2014 parks' bond. I have a few bullets here. One is that we only have so many project managers and staff to conduct these projects. Some, like a roadway or a park, a greenway project is like a roadway project. We have to acquire real estate, and that takes time. Like the private and nonprofit sector, we have to go through the city's permitting process, which takes some time. The UDO is really built around commercial and residential development, so when you're building a park, you're really caught in between in most cases. Programming schedules. So I talked about the 2014 parks' bond had 65% of its money was reinvesting back into our park system. So we try not to impact our camps, our leagues, and if we're renovating a pool, we do it off-season. That sometimes pushes the schedule out. Building consensus takes time, and the construction market has had a big impact on the 2014 bond project.
Stephen, can I ask a question? Go back to that slide, please.
Yes.
When you're talking about stakeholder and public consensus building, on average, how long is that process running?
That's a tricky question, because some of the smaller projects can take as long, a small project might take a year, a large project might take a year. But a master plan of a new site, a new park, we looked at about 10 to 12 months. And that assumes that the neighborhood and the surrounding community is generally in favor of it. If we have components within that master plan that there is not consensus on, we then try to work with the community versus bringing to the board a problem or bringing the council to an issue. So I would say a new master plan is about 10 to 12 months, and ones that take a little bit more consensus can be 12 to 14 months.
I'm familiar with some that have run for three-plus years, so I was asking that question.
Now, note that that is a master plan. When we finish the master plan and we engage in design, we go back to the community and make sure that their expectations and consensus is also there. That's also a three-to-four-month period. We do 30-day notices, we go to the Parks Board, we bring it to council. So the master plan itself might take, we'll say, 10 to 12 months. And then if you get to schematic level, that might take three to four months as well.
Thank you.
Following back up on the construction market, the construction market has had a big impact on the 2014 bond. This slide was generated in conjunction with our Engineering Services Department. You can see that on many of our cost estimates, they're exceeding our available budget. And most, and many of our bids, they have exceeded the cost estimate. You all are aware that inflation is increasing, and the construction market is saturated. I would say the second-to-last bullet is a really important one. Parks is doing swimming pool work, really unique work, so in some cases, we're not even getting bidders. So that, what that requires is for us to bid items multiple times, and to some extent, we have just paused and then bundled projects together so that the construction industry might see those projects as being more favorable. And then the last bullet being lack of subcontractors. So shifting away from the 2014 parks' bond, I'm going to talk a little bit about how we look at and frame parks' bonds moving forward or have in the past. So some of our guiding documents, the city's strategic plan, our park system plan, which I'll come back to, and the arts' plan, and housing, and transit, all of them inform our thinking on project selection. We also work with both private consultants and in-house staff on assessing our infrastructure. That might be paving, roofing, our bridges and boardwalks. All of those assets are then put in a priority based on those scoring system, whether it be an industry standard or one that was developed by our staff on the replacement timeframe. We look at partnerships, whether there are other government sector or nonprofits out there. Two projects that come to mind would be Briar Creek and Barwell Road that were built in conjunction with the school system. Each project that we do in the community, we always take public input regardless of the project, just about the park system itself. And then I mentioned earlier that in 2003, some of our projects were not completed as a result of the construction industry, so we moved them to 2007. Moving forward, we have some parks' bond projects in 2014 that had that same impact. So what this generates is public input, guiding documents. In 2014, it generated about $300 million worth of identified needs for Raleigh's park system. As you know, that in my previous slide, 92 million of that was funded by the 2014 bond. Some of these projects are implemented through our annual five-year CIP. The remaining projects are basically shelved and continue to be looked at by staff as a priority, but they're shelved to be a future parks' bond project.
I have a quick question about the prior slide.
Yes.
The projects that roll forward, so you had some in 2007 to 2014, and then there are some in 2014 that are sort of in that category, do you have a list of those?
We do. We do. Working through the Park Board will identify those projects that have not been completed as a result of the construction industry. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Yep. I mentioned our primary guiding document is the Raleigh's Park System Plan that was developed in 2014. That part, our park system plan, has seven guiding principles, all of which probably inform our parks' bond projects the most. How we're connecting with our community, inaccessibility, are we equitably building our park system, are we reinvesting in our park system? When we did a survey in 2014, the Raleigh community identified it was more important to take care of what we have first before we build new assets. Are we coordinating and collaborating with our peers and other agencies? Do we have a balanced park system, meaning that we're not all athletics or all nature, that we appeal to everyone in the community? Are we looking at innovative ways to provide services? And then finally, are we continuously engaging our community to understand our needs?
Don't forget the dogs, Stephen.
Did you see the right-hand corner?
I did.
Okay, I was just making sure.
I wanted a bullet there.
Additional prioritization we looked at is ensuring that prior bond projects that the city committed to are completed, our city's strategic plan, which I mentioned before, safety and code compliance. If there are emergencies, we take care of them, but we do have some leeway with ADA, but we have funded a lot of ADA improvements the last decade. Are we providing an equitable level of service across the park system? When is the last time a park was invested in? And then operating impacts. So we take into account that the one-time cost of building a park is the cheapest part of that asset. It is operating it of the 20 and 30 years ahead. Now, greenways have a slightly different set of prioritization. And before I get into these criteria, I want to note at the bottom, we have launched our Greenway Master Plan update, and as a part of that update, we were developing a quantitative metrics on how we decide which greenway projects we fund. So the bullets I'm sharing with you now are ones that we have used both in the past and currently using. So constructability, can we actually build that greenway? Connectivity, how are we connecting to points of interest like museums, stores, and residences and neighbors? Are we supporting a multimodal transportation system? Property acquisition, if we are building a mile-long trail and we don't have any easements or ownership, it's going to cost the city a lot of money to build that trail. Public safety, how are we working with our roadway and our transportation system to make sure the improvements in the greenway align with pedestrian bike safety? And then ultimately, we do have a lot of requests from neighborhoods to connect to So that's the overall park system, and just to remind you, on January 7th, you referred this to the Park Board. So what I share with you will be shared with the Board in more detail. On January 7th, or I'm sorry, on January 16th, last Thursday, the Park Board met and has not determined a full process, but they have agreed tentatively to meet weekly. The first step the Board has decided to undertake is to look at the criteria I just shared with you all and not look at projects, to determine whether the criteria staff are using is appropriate and aligned with the city values. Our next meeting with the Park Board is this Thursday. So from the park system, more global, to Dorothea Dix Park, the identification of those Phase 1 projects were a little bit different. The master plan was adopted just about a year ago. The council at the time had directed staff to develop an implementation plan, which was provided to the council last fall. And in November, the Conservancy came forward with a proposal called Phase Now, which helped support those Phase 1 projects. And recently, as you'll see covered in future slides, the city has advertised preliminary design services for the Gateway Plaza and Play, which is one of the eight projects that I'll share with you, which are in Phase 1. So the Phase 1 projects for Dorothea Dix Park all align with the three core principles of the master plan, which is open up and connect, build from what's there, and offer something for everyone. The projects you can see that align around Dix on this image are the Gateway Plaza and Play, the creek and landfill improvements, the land bridge, a multi-use path connecting Lake Wheeler Road to the inner part of the park, the cemetery and historic building and entries. And then the final one is looking at utility improvements across the Phase 1 area to support future phases of the park. So we have, over time throughout the master plan, looked at a conceptual cost estimate process. So master plan equals concept, that's a very important thing to take away. We hired a third-party cost estimator, we worked with Michael van Valkenburg Associates, staff from an interdepartmental team from the Public Utilities Department, Engineering Services Department, and Transportation, all looked at the range in costs being developed. We also spoke to other agencies about some of our assumptions. The challenge is that we lack a lot of technical engineering needed to understand the full breadth of costs and uncertainty within the projects. The creek project being specific in our utility and infrastructure. A lot of the utilities are unknown on-site or date back several decades, if not 100 years. So some of the assumptions we looked at, are looking at currently are high contingencies, the market impacts that I talked about earlier, the bold design ambition, as well as assuming the city will lead the project over the next seven to 10 years. Currently, we don't, because of all the uncertainty, we do not have confidence in a cost estimate and are establishing cost ranges, which we will have to bring back to you in the future. So referencing the projects that the Conservancy has stepped forward and supported, there's $7 million worth of commitment over the next 18 months. This is a better slide demonstrating where these projects are at. The Conservancy has agreed to help start the design for the Gateway Plaza and Play along Lake Wheeler Road, support the renovation of the chapel and the superintendent's cottage, as well as make early park improvements and general planning and support. And what is not included in here is $1 million worth of contingency. So some of the next steps for Dix, we are working on interviews this week with a possible design consultant to start the design work for the Gateway Plaza and Play. We will come forward in February with a transfer of fund and seek your authorization to begin to look at and study the creek because of its uncertainty. We'll also look at issuing an RFQ for an infrastructure master plan and an equitable development plan. And then in March, we will bring back an updated MOU with the Conservancy. So between the park system and Dix Park, what we're going to distill down a little bit is how we would look at draft bond scenarios. So based on the work from 2014 all the way till now, as well as our ongoing community engagement and working in boards and commissions, we're exploring four different categories within the possible parks' bond. Community connectivity, which is, we imply as greenways, park reinvestment and improvements, new park development, and a fourth category of Dorothea Dix Park. So this is a really busy slide, but this is probably the most important slide in the whole presentation. So in the left-hand column, also, I'll start at the top, sorry. So some of the different scenarios in which we're looking at are built off of information from Wake County. The reevaluation has, now has the penny having a value of $7.4 million. The scenarios you see below are based off of Wake County data, saying the average value of a home in Raleigh is $268,000. So looking over to your left column are the four categories in which I covered in the previous slides. As you work to your right, there are three hypothetical levels of funding, $150 million park bond package, 200, and then 250. Option 1, 2, and 3, with which, in each of them, assumes different allocations for greenways, for park reinvestment, and for new park development. So on the slide, you have three different bond scenario options of levels, as well as within those bond scenarios are different levels or different proportions of funding for each of the four categories. The most important note is that, well, these ranges are in the millions of dollars. As you look at the left side of the column, the fifth line, sixth line down, this is a range of operating impact that is estimated. Until the council decides which bond projects they want to pursue for the park system and Dorothea Dix Park, that would overall impact what our operating impacts are moving forward. So at this time, we have just reserved ranges as a broad cost estimate. Moving down to the next line is the anticipated tax impact for each of the three scenarios. And then finally, the annual impact to a property owner, assuming the average value of a home is $268,000. So some next steps, the city staff will be working with the Park Board on looking at different bond scenarios, collecting input and updating project lists, with a directive coming from the city council to bring that information back to the city council by their first meeting in April. So key questions, that's a lot of information. So some possible questions for your discussion are, what are your thoughts on the possible categories? Considerations for the Park Board? The size and scale of some of the scenarios I've shared? Or any open guidance for staff and the Park Board as we move forward?
Okay, so we'll bring this back to the table. First off, if you could leave those key questions up there, Stephen. Who has any questions or comments? Mr. Cox?
Yes, it's just me. Okay, at least for now, anyway. So a couple of questions regarding prioritization. I was actually at a meeting last week and some, with some folks that live near the Thornton Road property that's been designated as a future park, I guess, for some time. And one of the comments, well, actually, several of the comments I received from people were that, is this ever going to be a park? It's been promised to be a park for a number of years. And so one of the things I'd like to do is, or would like to suggest, is that we take into consideration how long a property that has been designated as a future park, when did that first come up, how long has it been, you know, promised to be a future park? Just because it's a future park, I'd hate to see it continually be deferred in terms of prioritization, just because we haven't done anything with it yet. The other aspect of this is regarding prioritization is, you know, I'm looking at slides 13 and 14, I don't see any mention of equity as a measure of prioritization. And I would like to see, suggest that that would also be incorporated as part of our prioritization of our projects.
Sure. The slide that has park system plan guiding principles that says equitable distribution, that's, we'll say that's a park planner's term for equity.
Okay, okay. And then I think that the third thing is always to look at the city as a whole and see how these park projects are dispersed geographically throughout the city, so they're not all being done in one location.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes?
Clarification on Mr. Cox's first question. What do you consider new park development? Is it acquisition of land and incorporating that new land into the system? Or is it development of parks that already have adopted master plans that haven't been funded yet, or is it something different?
It's something in between.
Excuse me, I was asking Mr. Bentley.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It is, it's a combination of both. So, we define new park development as a park that did not exist prior to this bond. So, if it's Thornton Road, we would develop that park, that would be a new park development. Within that category, historically, we have also had land acquisition funds. So we would go out and buy, buy land. We have several parcels that are undeveloped in our park system. Primarily, it's a land banking strategy, that the city will grow to these parks. So, one of the other guiding principles you'll see is access. So, we have an access model, which our neighborhood and community access model, which the council approved last year. We try to have a 10-minute walk to every person in Raleigh, and that's one of our standards, or a half a mile. So the decision to build new parks is usually based on individuals or families' level of service within their area, based on their access to a park.
And if I could, one brief follow-up on that. So, frequently, when new parks are being developed, phasing of construction becomes important. How does that factor into the planning for a bond? For example, you might build some small park amenities in a newly-developed park early on, but the community center might, as an example, be deferred later as a bigger-ticket item. Can you help the council understand how phasing can help support development of new parks and reinvestment, but maybe a park sometimes doesn't get completely finished? Any thoughts you could share with us?
Sure. The first phase of the park is usually determined off of the community's priority. Future phases of park are similar. A council directive, an organized community that has come forward and supported wanting to have the next phase built. Primarily, I'll get back to our data and our access. If a community has said, "I want tennis in a certain area," or "play," we now have the ability to analyze and see where we have, or we don't have, play or a play partner in that area. So future phases are a combination of multiple things. Council, board directives, community input, and then the actual data in which we have to help drive our professional decision. Is that?
You can tell Mr. Bevkin that you've served on the parks board for six years. Yes.
And I think I have a follow-up question, but it could also be unrelated, because I'm not really sure. It's kind of hard for me to follow some of that. But, the park projects that were intended to be funded in prior bonds, but were not able to, would they fall, these draft categories, are they going to fall under new park development if we choose to prioritize them? Is that where they would go?
It's a combination of both. So some of them are future phases of parks. So, we do have parks that are undeveloped, that would be in the new park development category. And then the reinvestment category might be the second phase of X park, that the first phase was done, we'll say, in 2003.
So they would fall into maybe two categories?
Yes.
And the park that council, I mean Cox was discussing, the proposed park, is that one that was intended to be funded in a prior bond? Or is that was just some, would that fall into one of those categories?
It would fall under the new park development category. It currently does not have a master plan, so a master plan would have to be developed for it. And I'd have to go back and look and see where it was in the 2014 discussions, I'm not sure.
And I think when we're having these discussions of what this bond would cover, when we're looking at priorities, it would be my preference, I think, you know, I want this bond to be successful. And so I think a primary argument may be, well, we, as a voter, we, you know, we voted in favor of a bond before, and those parks are still not done. So I think it's going to be really important that we're pulling into this discussion any past projects that were promised and that money was earmarked for, and making sure that they're actually at least discussed in this prioritization. I know we're going to have some competing priorities, but for me, I think it's going to be important that we give attention to past promises made that weren't able to come to realization for whatever reason.
Absolutely.
If I may, just a final follow-up, or maybe not a final follow-up, is that parks like the Thornton Road Park, we already own that land, is that correct? So there's no additional land acquisition that would be necessary?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Knight?
Mr. Bentley, back to the greenways, and I think you touched on, what's the definition around greenways? Is it being ever expanded, or talking about bikeways, et cetera? Is there any way to get beyond, sort of, the traditional idea of greenways? Was that some sort of defined?
To answer your question, I believe we're going to have a presentation for you at a future meeting, but I'll give you a couple of notes. The fundamental thing is that the greenway system was born out of ecology in the 1970s. And as we have evolved over a city, the dynamics, so it was born out of ecology with a trail in it. Now we have become urbanized, and we have this interdependency on transportation. So the greenway plan hopefully will reconcile that right balance of what we're trying to do. We work closely with transportation, and when and if possible, we do make the improvements we can to make them more transportation, well, of transportation quality. I'd also note, the final note is, half our greenway program was built before 2000, when we did not have a transportation-reliant greenway system. So now we're going back and making those improvements for transit and transportation.
Just a quick follow-up, Madam Mayor. So, reinvestment may be part of that, because in my district, as well as everybody across the city, you know, that's the big complaint, is when they go down, they go down for way too long. And so we need to figure out a way, you know, is it a contingency fund, emergency fund, to get those up and running a lot quicker than we were able, have been able to in the past?
Yes, sir.
And I think to that point, too, looking at the slide that says beyond the adopted greenway plan, you know, I think one thing that we need to be looking at is durability as well, because, and that probably is a reinvestment issue, that if we can build sections with material that are more durable to the elements, and they're going to be not closed for as long a period of time for maintenance.
Yes.
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to add maybe just an observation to the discussion. I think this is exactly the feedback we were looking for today. Just a couple of things to think about. One element is, and I think this started in the last bond referendum, we are now starting to feel that pressure between the restoration, reinvestment, keeping our facilities up to a high-quality standard that people want, and the pressure to expand and build new. There's no right or wrong answer to that, that's just a part of this exercise to try to put a lot of those needs and priorities into a limited amount of money. And so I think that's ultimately, when Mr. Bentley is talking about those categories, that's some of those trade-offs. And ultimately, then, you have to fit that within how much you're willing to spend. The other important element to think about is that operating cost impact. So some elements have a much larger, ongoing, operating impact into the future, both from the savings as well as the additional amount. So for example, if you open a new community center, that means you have to make sure we staff it, we program it, utilities, maintenance, all that sort of thing. On the other hand, if you renovate an existing facility and you can make it more efficient, you can save money on your operating costs. I'm not suggesting that's a good or a bad thing, but that operating cost range is related to the kinds of projects that you choose. Final comment, several of the reinvestment categories do have phasing of future elements of parks that were contemplated in already-approved master plans. So they might be building a new building, but it's still in the category of reinvestment because it's the second phase of an existing park. So, it doesn't always mean just retrofit, it can be additional buildings or facilities. So just wanted to, it's a little, it's kind of like three-dimensional chess. There's a lot of different variables that push and pull each other, and at the end of the day, it all comes together.
Mayor, thank you for that clarification. That was part of what I was getting at with the first question. And I may digress just a little bit here, and Mr. Bentley, you might need some help, but, from other staff, I mean, because this is a little bit out of your core area, but on Slide 7, talking about project schedule impacts, and I'm aware there's a text change working through the process that would relieve parks projects from having to apply for certain permits and maybe be exempted from certain reviews. I'm sure our staff is tracking that. Could we, today or outside of this meeting, get an update on the progress of that text change? I'm very interested in seeing that to completion, and I'll just offer some comments, and you don't have to respond unless you'd like to. But, I have seen a number of parks projects exceed their permit and design budget for different reasons through our permitting review process. It's disruptive, it causes delays, it causes budget overruns, and this sort of cascading impact of now you have to rework the entire park plan because you've spent more than you intended to in design and permitting. It's been concerning to me for some time. I don't have a good sense of how prevalent that is, but if you have any thoughts today, I'd love to hear that, and if we could get a little follow-up on that text change, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Just think how the development community feels.
I'll defer to the update from the text change, but my comments earlier about the UDO really wasn't built for park development, were the park builders. It has a focus on commercial and residential-type development. We get caught in between, and sometimes it does have an impact on our projects.
Any other questions? Because I have some. Mr. Martin?
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Bentley, thank you for today. You can either choose to speak to this now, or if there's a document that you want to circulate through staff, that's fine, but other colleagues have hit on this a little bit, but I'm curious what equitable distribution means to the park staff.
We can definitely share with you. The council endorsed a, it's called our Neighborhood and Community Connections Program, was an outcome of our 2014 bond program. We utilized Wake County vulnerability and health index information that looks at various demographics and helps make a determination, are we providing a 10-minute walk to those people who need it the most? And does that align with transit or near a housing development? That before wasn't the case. When we had a park, we would draw a circle two miles away, was the, did the next park touch that circle? So we're now using demographic data to help determine where best for us to have our programs and facilities. And we can share that document with you.
Great, thank you. I'm curious what has been done thus far, given the complex history that Dix Park possesses on its land. What has been done to date to kind of collect and the thinking around how that will be portrayed moving forward as the park progresses through the various phases? I'm wondering if you could just speak a little bit to that process.
For the equitable development plan?
Sorry, just the historical kind of context.
Yeah, absolutely. So there, the city staff participates with a group in partnership with the Conservancy, the Legacy Committee. So how are we telling the story of the, I think the four stories, the prehistoric story, the story of a plantation, the story of a hospital, and the story of a park? So we have a lot of information to build off of, but we have not determined a, we'll say, an interpretive strategy. We believe it'll play out through design, it'll play out through our programming, but there is no one way to address its complicated history, besides it's weaved in through everything we do and acknowledging its long history.
Sure. I think that that's something that is important to me. I was speaking with someone at the dog park, Dix Dog Park, this weekend, and he's a friend and had no idea the history of it until he went on a tour and was kind of enamored and in awe of what has happened there. And it meant so much more to him that that piece of history is in our city and that it exists. And so I'd really love to see a commitment in, as we move into Phase One, of what the Legacy Committee and, in conjunction with staff, what that product will look like throughout the various components of the development, whether it be through programming, actual development. So, I know that there's, you can't comment on that now, it's just a dream of mine that that really be honored as you move forward.
We're committed to that.
Great. I think that the last couple of things, so the easier thing is the dog park.
You think it's easier.
Well, so I do this thing when I take my dogs, I call it the frat outfit, and I wear really baggy clothes and a big hat and sunglasses like I'm hungover. And it's generally just so that, like, I don't...
I did not wear that in my fraternity.
That's not surprising. Did you wear bow ties?
Yes.
Okay. So, generally, people don't...
I've lost control of the meeting.
Sorry.
It's all over.
Well, I think it's important. So people don't, people generally don't recognize me when I'm at the Dorothea Dix Dog Park, which is the point, so I get to listen. And people are very upset that the dog park will eventually be leaving, and it made me realize that in the Phase One plan, the Phase Now and the Phase One plan, I don't see a plan for the dog park. And so I'm just curious if you can comment on where that is.
That's going to be a Kate Pierce question. I do believe that we will accommodate, so, we have three dog parks, I believe, in the master plan. So because it will be displaced by the Gateway Plaza Play, does not mean that we will not recreate that temporarily. So I would just say that we're committed to having pet-friendly facilities throughout, because some people might say, "I want my cat parked." But we will definitely relocate it as we move forward, and well in advance. So it won't be, "It's here one day and then gone the next." And we'll work with the canine community on where that will be when and how, and how they can be a part of it.
Great. On the last two items, I just, it's around values, I think, and the first is just about equity in general. And I think that where, you know, Councilmember Stewart always talks about, you know, budgeting and where we place our money shows where our values are. And I think that it also shows who we value. And one of the things that I'd like to discuss and for staff to review is the idea of funding the land bridge in Phase One. And instead of funding the land bridge in Phase One, I believe it's of critical importance to, if this is truly to be a park-for-all, I, and I'm not sure how the rest of my colleagues feel, I think that it's of critical importance that the first kind of community connection is actually to southeast Raleigh and to Chavis Park, and that it's to Shaw University and it's to downtown. And so, whether that's a greenway connection, and it includes bike and pedestrian connections, that, to me, is far more important in, as an opening statement to who this park is for and who it honors than doing the land bridge, which is exciting and cool, looks great, I'm all for it, at the right time. And I think that we have to be very intentional, as we set out on this endeavor, to ensure that we're including everyone, and I think that that sends not only the right message, but actually gets, provides access for people that want to be there.
I appreciate those comments. A couple of things I would share is, one of the deficiencies of our Dix Park master plan is it did not reconcile all the bike-pedestrian access analysis we wanted. So the downtown connection, the connection to Chavis Park. The primary reason why the land bridge is in Phase One is the engineering needed to do the creek, you do them at the same time. So I would agree with you, really taking a hard look as a city on how we can connect to other communities, not just the Governor Morehead pulling it. It's important, but the primary reason it was in is if our designers and engineers had said, "If you're doing the creek, do the bridge at the same time, because you're basically messing with a landfill."
Understood. Last question. Where did the figure that's been floated and discussed of $150 million for the bond figure, where did that come from for the park?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So there's been a figure that's been floated for $150 million for Dorothea Dix Park?
On this slide, or?
Just in general?
In general. But it wasn't fabricated by me, because I can tell you, I have looked at our ranges, and it's not $150 million. So I'm not sure.
What is it?
We don't have it a confident range right now, which we're going to share.
Because of the uncertainty of the...
That's correct.
The creek and the landfill, utilities, whatnot?
Yes. Primarily is that we are still at a concept level, and as I mentioned in February and March, we'll bring some recommendations for further engineering. Until we do that analysis, it doesn't serve the project well to bring an uncertain number to the city council. to the City Council.
So Councilmember Martin, if I could, I think part of what you're hearing are proposals from potentially the private sector and the philanthropy community that have proposed some options for folks to discuss informally. But the 150 million is not something that we've generated as a staff recommendation. I think that's just part of the ongoing discussion with the fundraising community.
Great. Yeah, it seems as less of an option and more of a requirement as it's currently proposed, and so thank you for providing that clarification. I think that my request is that we work with you all and continue to listen to what the actual numbers might look to be, because we have very important decisions to make, and we obviously all sitting up here value this park very much and are excited to do it, but we can do this in many phases. So, thank you.
I have a question.
I wanted, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'll bring it back light. I understand that the Pigeon House Creek project, along with Deveraux Meadows, is a much longer-term project. It kind of spans both greenway and parks and new and old, and I don't know that I have a question, but I wanted to make sure that it gets flagged for an important future north to downtown to eventually south connection that we don't presently have.
Note well taken.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question on that. So the Deveraux Meadows parking trail is on the 2014 park bond status list.
Yes.
So does that mean it's been funded and it's in planning and environmental analysis phase, or is there not funding earmarked?
So the $2 million that was funded in 2014 was for the engineering and environmental study?
So it's construction, actual construction is going to have to be funded separately?
That is correct. Like the Dorothy Dix Park site, it has a number of challenging engineering issues.
Okay, Mr. Knight?
Going back to your scenarios, what are, are there legal standards or general best-practice standards in terms of the timing of the use of the money from the bonds? I'm just, you know, just looking at 2014 bond, there's a range of, the status ranges quite a bit. And then with Dix in particular, you have a range of amounts here. Do y'all have an estimate on how much or how long that would take to spend those amounts?
So the, I believe the city has, and I'll allow the manager to jump in, seven years to issue.
Right. So let me help, and then you can talk about the spend rate on the parks. So I'm not going to speak sort of specifically legally, but generally, the practice is that you can authorize and issue general obligation debt, which a bond referendum is, up to a certain threshold, and we are well within the threshold with these particular options. What you're doing with the bond referendum is getting the voters to authorize the issuance of the debt. Then, once that's approved, we go through the process of executing the projects. When we're ready to spend the money, we authorize and issue the debt. So it is staggered, we do bond issues periodically as needed. So there's no set best practice, other than our own financial policies and procedures and our best practices, which we are all currently in as a AAA-rated bond community from all three rating agencies. The spend rate, is what we call it, is important. So one of the elements you have to think about is, what is your ability to thoughtfully predict the spending of the money? You generally can authorize that, spend the money after about a seven-year period. You can get an extension from the local government commission up to 10 years, but at some point, you have to turn that authority back in if you can't spend it. And so often, you'll see that balancing act of going out for so much money that you can then promise that you can spend. To some degree, these ranges represent what we feel we can accomplish within the period, and the option, we're not giving you an option you can't do. These are all valid options. If for some reason, Councilmember Knight, you wanted to say, well, I want to go way higher than this, that is possible, but then we would have to be a lot more aggressive about adding staff and probably being a little bit more careful about what projects we included, if that makes sense. There are communities sometimes that can authorize too much debt, and then you're unable to spend the money.
And then you're taxing people with no benefit.
We believe we can, we believe we can accomplish these projects within the legal parameters.
Quick question.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to ask a few now, excuse me, and then maybe, and then we'll follow up, Mr. Cox. So a couple of things here. First off, I heard what Sage said about the land bridge versus the, what I'll call an urban greenway from Chavis to Dix Park. I would like for us to look at that as an option and include that in our greenway master plan, because I think that's an important message. I think you really articulated that well. Very important message for us to send to the community that this is a park-for-all, and we're doing it with our funds. So I also heard what you said about the land bridge being tied to the creek, which we have no idea what that will cost, whatnot. Is it possible to move the creek to Phase 2, but include the engineering and that type of work in Phase 1, and then move that out, but potentially look at pricing for the meadows?
So, yes, you had a couple of questions in there. It'll take the city...
That's how I roll.
Yep. It'll take the city staff and our chosen consultants some time to work through the constructibility of the creek, because it involves a landfill and possibly a land bridge.
Do we have a timeframe even on that? Or we don't even know?
So the first phase, I think Mr. Knight was asked about, the first phase is seven to 10 years. So we could look at the analysis from engineering and permitting over the next few years, and if the council decides at that point they want to do the creek and the land bridge in a future phase, we could do that. So I guess my message is, it'll take some time to figure out whether the state would permit it, how you would logistically do it. So moving it to another phase, if the council chooses, the staff could do that.
So would it be feasible, then, to move the meadows, the land bridge, and, well, in the creek, to, wait a minute?
The meadows, I didn't answer your question about the meadows.
Hold on. The land bridge and the creek to Phase 2, and then look at the meadows in Phase 1?
We would have to come back to you, no, so there's some buildings there that the state actually has a 25-year lease on, not a 10-year lease, and they would obstruct the completion of the meadow. The other thing is, remember, the meadow also crosses the landfill, but not in a way like an engineering analysis that a land bridge would or the creek.
Right.
It's probably more of a best practice to restore a landfill to a meadow. So we could work as a staff on determining the requirements for the meadow versus the creek and the landfill and bring that back to you.
Okay, that would be helpful. The other thing that comes to mind is just as we're talking about our spend and spend rate and whatnot, there have been parks projects that have gone on for three years, talking, planning, whatnot. I really think we need some type of reset on our engagement process as we look to spending this next bond. Like, what does that look like? You know, we have a lot of meetings, but meetings aren't necessarily the best outreach either. You get the same people who come over and over again, instead of being more inclusive in the community. And I would like for us to kind of look at what that engagement process looks like and potentially do a reset, so we're not spending three to five years planning a park that we're actually moving forward and getting something done. So that's just my two cents. One of the questions you asked were for some thoughts and priorities. I think that geographic balance is important. When you go to the Parks Board, I think renovation is important. I get more emails about our greenway system than I think anything else. Greenways and maintaining them and making new connections, absolutely important. And I think looking at them, not only from a greenway and park standard, but from a transportation standard and what that can mean. And then looking at maybe some of the scenarios, so instead of coming back with a three, here's 300 million, can you look at how you have these phased? And then have the Parks Group come back to us and say, this is what we could do for this amount, this is what we could do for this amount, and this is what we could do for this amount. So you're looking at the 150, the 200, and the 250?
We could do that.
Okay. Mr. Cox?
Yes, just some clarification question. If we are more aggressive and add more staff, is the staff funded from the bond or is it from the general fund?
It's usually a combination. So we do include some staffing as a new matter of practice, starting with the last bond referendum. In other words, these are the project managers that it would take for us to support the bonds. So we can add additional operating cost to add additional staff to try to speed up the process. At some point, it gets to be that the practical application, that gets harder and harder. So it impacts real estate people, it impacts the project managers, it can impact the attorney's office in terms of condemnations for land, and so the answer to that is yes, we can accelerate with more staff. It starts to get a little bit of a diminishing return the farther you get out there, but yes, we can. Right. So we spend a lot more on staff, but we don't really accomplish all that. It, what, we accomplish more, but it costs us more to accomplish the same thing. And then, I think, as a more community-oriented perspective, we start to run the risk of not meeting the citizens' expectations of what we promised we would do in the bonds.
And then I also just want to say, I second the mayor's comments about bringing in our schedules, because we're finding that inflation is causing us to deliver less and less park as the longer it takes to do them.
Yes. If I could just add to that, we have gone through an extraordinary construction market period since actually the 2014 bonds were approved, in ways that not only have limited the amount of engineering and bidders, but also the cost inflation factors have been extraordinary. So it is squeezing some of our projects in ways that are not happy, so.
Well, 2014, we were just coming out of the recession, and the construction industry was just reviving, and now it's booming, there's not enough labor, you saw lack of subcontractors, and, yeah, it's messy. So, any other questions? I have one more comment and one question, but Mr. Buffkin, go on.
Just a few brief comments. I agree with Mr. Cox and the mayor that this, the Parks Planning Process and how we engage citizens deserves that kind of second look and reevaluation that the mayor was describing. But more broadly, I'd like to say thank you for being with us. I have, as the mayor alluded to, been on our Parks Board for many years and actually have served twice on our Parks Board. It was a briefer stint many years ago, but I've always been impressed with the professionalism and the quality of work that our staff in the Parks Department does. In my opinion, they are par excellence in taking comments from the public, being true to those comments and the plans that we developed. They are incredibly passionate and creative people, and I'm very proud of that work and looking forward to the exciting work that will be involved in putting this bond together and grateful we have that staff to help us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Okay, so one question. Is there a point in time that we've determined that we will have staff on-site at Dix Park?
We currently actually have staff on-site at Dix Park. We have our park maintenance staff that do our mowing, some of our landscaping. Through our partnership with the Conservancy, we foresee actually staffing the chapel, and if space allows, we would move our park planning, our Dix Park planning team there.
Okay. And one comment I wanted to make, I see folks from the Raleigh Chamber of Commerce here today and also Wakeup Wake County. Wanted just, for point of clarification here, the chamber will be working with us on polling all of our bonds, housing and parks, to determine where the public kind of stands and how they feel about the dollar amounts. So before we start talking about final dollar amounts, really would like to see that polling data come in. Adrian, when do you think that will be anticipated?
As far as any changes, we are looking at starting polling early next week with results being back in mid-late February.
Okay. Which works out very well from a timing standpoint. I just want to remind everybody, our deadline is May 19th for final decisions with final approval when?
June 2nd.
June 2nd. So that gives us time to continue to massage this, get the necessary data that we need to make a decision. And in the meantime, Mr. Bentley, if you could work on some of the issues that we discussed today and maybe reconfigure some numbers?
Yes.
That would be very helpful pertaining to the land bridge and the creek, so, and then the meadows. So that would be great. So I do want to acknowledge and thank our partners, though, because without them, we don't get this done. So thank you very much for being here, thanks for your interest, and thank you for your support and advocacy. We will very much need that, and same with the Dix Conservancy. So thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, I think we're adjourned until 1 o'clock. Thank you, everybody.